We'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Marissa, would you do us the honor?
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Islam, do we have a report out of closed session?
Mr. Montes, none.
But we do have some unfinished items that the board will have to go back into afterwards or call for a special meeting.
No, we can finish afterwards. But if we vote then...
No, no, there's some, there's some items that still need to be...
Oh, something else?
Yeah, there's other items.
Closed session item, you cannot get to it. Board has to go back to closed session unless you call for a special meeting.
So at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn the closed session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed session is adjourned at 7:25. So it is 7:26 and we will be opening, open session. First of all, I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight and apologize for the delay. We hope that you can understand. We've got difficult decisions to make here and we're trying our best. Do we have a motion for the adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Preferential vote by student board member?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The agenda has been adopted. We will first begin with presentations.
There's someone for Mark. Can I do that?
And our Vice President, Ms. Nancy O'Callaghan, will help us with the first presentation for Mr. Mark Streeter, Eisenhower High School teacher, humanitarian recognition.
I cannot tell you how much pleasure this gives me to recognize this gentleman. Mark, can you come up here? I'm looking away. This is the finest woodshop teacher in the entire state of California, if not the nation. And he is also a hero, a hometown hero. There are a lot of great accomplishments that staff members in the Rialto Unified School District have earned and continue to excel at. But once in a while, we hear about a miraculous story that tugs at our hearts because it involves saving the life of a child. And in this case, the outcome was wonderfully positive. Mr. Mark Streeter, a woodshop teacher at Eisenhower High School, took a vacation weekend last month with his wife, Kristy. The couple was celebrating their 30th anniversary - oh, you guys are newlyweds - at a local resort in Palm Desert. According to Mr. Streeter, his wife retired to bed early and he decided he wanted to jump into the jacuzzi before bedtime. "I was sitting in the jacuzzi just relaxing," recalled Mr. Streeter, "and all of a sudden, I heard this frantic voice coming from a man yelling, 'Baby in the pond, baby in the pond.' At that moment, Mr. Streeter jumped out of the jacuzzi and ran to help. I saw a child face down, lifeless, motionless. It was pretty scary, but I grabbed the child out of the water and rolled him over and immediately began compression. At first, it wasn't working very smoothly, so I began pushing his back upward and started the second compression. I kept talking to him, saying, 'Come on, breathe,' or 'Cry, just do something, I'm not losing you.' Miraculously, the child regained consciousness." Mr. Streeter found out later that the baby was 19 months old and that his family was vacationing from Encino. The veteran woodshop teacher has received various accolades and hero titles since saving the toddler's life. He said he is humbled by the attention. "Of course, it felt good," he said, "but I would think and hope that anyone would have done the same thing. I was fortunate that I was there and that the outcome was that this child has a chance at life." The family members of the little toddler have spoken and are thankful to Mr. Streeter. He credits some of his quick lifesaving skills to the training he received in becoming a teacher. "I remember when renewing our teaching credentials every five years, there was a basic training we had to take. I know that helped me because I remembered a lot from my training way back when." Mr. Streeter may not call himself a hero, but it is not every day that a person saves the life of a child. When an unfortunate emergency situation occurs, some people freeze or are apprehensive to assist, but not Mark Streeter. He jumped in to save a child and our district applauds and salutes him for his humanitarian efforts. And I want to say, as I did when his wife first shared this story with me at Eisenhower, we were up there for his awards ceremony and I just want to say that thank you. I'm a mother and grandmother. Here I go again. Thank you! We gotta smile for the kids. Oh, yeah, that might help. Details, detail. There we go. The certificate says, "Rialto School District Board of Education is honoring Mark Streeter in appreciation of your heroic actions and humanitarian spirit."
If we don't mind, for media purposes, can we have a picture with the entire board?
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. O'Callaghan.
My grandson's about that same age, so that's why I got a little choked up.
Next up, we have a couple of presentations from our board member, Mr. Joseph Ayala.
Thank you, President Montes. We have a lot of great people working at this district and it's such a pleasure, I just wanted to say, and what an honor to be able to continue recognizing positive events, positive individuals. And with that being said, we'll start with a little story here or maybe some comments. Our staff here, when you work with kids, every day is a new day. It's a new challenge. This is not a science, it's an art. And there's a lot of stress. I think at one time, they said, "The stress that a teacher undergoes on a daily basis is right next to the air traffic controller." And air traffic controller was listed as number one most stressful job. So with that, I'll start with saying, "All work and no play has been often, has been quoted as a path to burnout." And many of us who have routines that are stressful with no signs of letting up could probably benefit from some kind of positive change throughout that day. Have you ever felt so tired that just walking outside to get the newspaper was a chore? Say, "News is not that important. Paper's outside, I'm not going to go out there, I'm just too tired." But the reality is, if you get up and you get your heart pumping and you get some fresh air and by the time you walk back in, you're going to feel better. With that said, too, think of the end of the day. A lot of us are working in a little cubicle, a little room, day after day after day. Is there anything could be done to change that routine? Absolutely. And that's why I'm going to call these two working-class heroes here to come up right now and join me so we can continue the story. Alex Olmos and Michelle Boggs, would you please come up and join me? Besides their day jobs, which we won't discuss at this time, what they do after work on a maybe weekly basis for a limited time throughout the year is volunteer their time to help adults. And the adults are our staff, our teachers, our counselors, our administrators, our classifieds. And create an opportunity for them to reduce the stress. So Mr. Olmos here. We'll start with Mr. Olmos. No, you know, we should start with the lady here. That's the way it works. That's when you get your order at a restaurant, you start with the lady. Mrs. Boggs here helped out with the bowling league and some people would say, "Well, that's no big deal." But remember, we just talked about the high stress next to air traffic controller? So there was some comments here that were taken. That's Mr. Streeter. She said, "I love bowling." Mrs. Boggs said, "It has been great getting to know other Rialto Unified School District employees whose paths would not have necessarily crossed mine during our regular work routine." This is something I didn't even bring up. But what an opportunity to get to know other people and other departments. And let's see what Alex has to say. "The golf league was a great place to socialize with fellow district employees in a friendly setting." Mr. Olmos replied, "And it's great to know some of our staff members and golfers personally, whom we did not know before. All in all, it was a positive experience." We encourage, we got 3,000 employees here. We encourage next year that we get more people involved. And it's not just sheer numbers that we're looking for. We want you to get involved because we care. We want you, when you go home, feel energized and then, when you turn off that last light, you sleep with rest and comfort and you wake up invigorated, energized, to do it all over again the next day. Would you please like to say a few words?
Thank you. Can I just say thank you?
That's terrific. That speaks loud and clear. And thank you on behalf of the Rialto Unified School District. We are grateful that you care about staff and for what you did. And we'll take a picture here and then we'll take one together. It's okay to clap. Okay, stay right here. Alejandro, would you like to say something?
Just thank you for all the support the board has given us. Thank you for all the support the board has given us and like, like Mr. Ayala said, hopefully we get more people out there next year and go out there and relax. It's really fun time, bowling or golf, highly recommended.
Well said. And on behalf of the Rialto Unified School District, we want to present to you a certificate of recognition to Alejandro Olmos for great service beyond the call of duty.
Thank you, Mr. Ayala. Next, we go on to public comments. And we have three items under public comments. We'll go to first, first item, which is comments from the floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes. Mr. Islam, do we have any items not on the agenda?
Yes, President Montes, yes, we have. Number of speaker, item not on the agenda. The first person is Nadia Morales. Morales, I'm sorry.
Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Nadia Morales. Gracias por la oportunidad que nos brindan de poder expresarnos esta noche.
Good evening, my name is Nadia Morales and I would like to express my gratitude to allow me to express myself tonight.
El motivo que me trae hoy aquí se refiere a las maestras de cuarto grado de la escuela elementary Fitzgerald School.
And the reason I'm here tonight is to make a comment about the teacher from Fitzgerald Elementary School.
Voy a referirme en general a dos maestras y específicamente a una.
So I'm going to talk about two teachers, but I'm going to be specific about one particular teacher.
Estas maestras, la maestra De Haven y la maestra Tana Budak, ellas han perdido el respeto hacia ciertos padres de familia. Han perdido... No se dan cuenta que el tratar con respeto a las personas es solamente un reflejo de cómo ellas respetan su profesión.
The first teachers, Tana Budak and De Haven, and it seems like they don't realize they're being, losing respect towards the parents and some of the students. And they do not understand that the respect towards other individuals... This is a reflection... That that's a reflection of the respect they have towards their own profession.
Ahora voy a explicar el... Ahora voy a explicarles a ustedes lo que me ocurrió con la maestra Tana Budak. Este hecho ocurrió cuando inició el ciclo escolar, en una tarde de películas, una noche familiar en la escuela. La maestra Tana Budak...
I'm going to start with an experience and this was a movie night. And this involved the teacher, Tana Budak.
Ella se aproximó hacia mí de una manera agresiva.
So she approached me in a very aggressive form.
Incluso invadiendo mi espacio personal.
And including that she was invading my personal space.
Apuntando con su dedo mi cara.
She was pointing at my face with her finger.
Y acusándome de haber sido grosera con su hijo.
And she was accusing me that I was being rude towards her child.
Yo ni siquiera sabía que ella tenía un hijo en la escuela.
I didn't have no idea that she had a child in school.
Esto no ocurrió.
This did not happen.
Y ella jamás se disculpó.
And she never apologized.
Ella hizo esto en frente de alumnos, padres de familia, incluso otros maestros.
And she did this behavior, in other words, in front of other parents, students, and other colleagues.
Yo mantuve el control por respeto a mis hijos.
I was able to maintain my control towards the respect of my children.
Después de este hecho, muchas personas se han acercado a mí diciéndome que la maestra es así, que ella grita, pero es normal, y todo esto.
So I've been told that that's normal, that she does, that she yells, and so on.
Me importan mucho los niños. No creo que ningún niño tiene que sentir miedo de cambiar de grado solo porque se va a topar con una maestra que intimida verbalmente.
I care a lot about children and I believe that the child should not be fearful and have to be changing from a class because they are feeling such a way towards the teacher.
Yo fui intimidada y acusada como adulto. No quiero imaginar cómo se siente un niño dentro de esa clase.
Cannot imagine how a child feels. I was intimidated inside the class by a teacher.
Tal vez no pueda yo evitar cada circunstancia difícil en la vida de mis hijos. Pero si puedo hablar hoy aquí y lograr que ustedes entiendan que se tienen que acercar a la escuela, tienen que acercarse a ver cómo son las maestras y tienen que preguntarle a los papás y a los niños cómo es la conducta de cada maestra en la escuela.
I'm hoping, I know that I cannot control the behavioral circumstances in the school and what happens in my children's classrooms. And they are children in fourth grade, okay? They are crying. They do not want to go forth into fourth grade. And the whole entire school knows that. There could be another version of what I'm saying. There's no other version to accuse an individual of something they have not done. And this is the reason why I requested that this teacher would not be my son's teacher. And it was denied. But I consider... And I believe that the children should not spend the summer thinking... What's going to happen when I come into the fourth grade? Many parents say in this school or in this district that many, they survived the fourth grade. And this is not because of the materials or, in other words, the classes. This is due to the teacher's characters. Thank you.
Thank you, gracias. Mr. Islam, do we have another speaker?
Yes.
Next, Stephen Figueroa.
I, Stephen Figueroa, with the Island Empire Latino Coalition. As you heard and we've seen today, it's easy to give acclamates and it feels good. And they deserve them. But it's difficult to hear when something complex needs to be addressed and you don't want to hear it. That's why we have Free Speech and Victoria Baca versus Moreno Valley that set the standard for us to give free speech and speak our piece. I'm here because we thought special ed was getting taken care of, but I hear you're about to mess it up again and we're not going to stand for it. We're here to say, we'll run new, we'll run new board members, bottom line, okay? Someone in special ed who was there, who knows how to comply with the law, who eliminates complaints, who the parents were resolving issues, educating the parents, is not somebody that sells out to the parents. There's no such thing as selling out to the parents because you're here for the kids. You're not here for your political money backers. This is not the House of Cards, or maybe it is. It was 103 today in this area, wasn't it? I think it's going to get a lot hotter. I think it needs to get a lot hotter. It'd be no problem. We're here for the kids. I brought children up here who were accused of being gang members, but no, they were nine-year-olds and Down Syndrome. But the prior superintendent told you guys and you believed it. And when we were coming here complaining and we finally filed with the state for different audits, so many complaints, we were right. But you didn't believe us. You had to have somebody else because the word of the parent is not good enough. It is, because we're prepared again to start filing mass complaints with the state and this time just to ask them to take it over, take over the special ed department because maybe you guys can't make the decision on how to really run it. I've been doing special ed for 30 years. I've been advocating. I ask you to hear me and I'm here to support Norma De Rio for Director of Special Education. And if she's removed, I'm telling you, we're going to be back every single meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Figueroa. Mr. Islam, do we have another speaker?
Yes, next Paula Bailey.
Good evening, interim superintendent, board, and community members. I have a different perspective than the previous speaker because I've been in this district for 14 years. And this is according to the email that I have sent you guys all several times. And I've been involved in numerous levels and I've participated in every which way, including special education. And I've had a completely different experience. I have not been treated as if I have the correct skin color when it comes to the current Director of Special Education. I do not get emails responded to. I not only represent my own children, but other people's children and I work with other children through my employer. And yes, there are IEPs that are out of compliance because we don't have the resources that we need, which I've spoken about before. I've been in different committees and meetings where staff and parents have been treated very rude and disrespectfully. I participate in a committee that the director had taken the request for laptops to be provided for the school psychologist that needed them for March. This request was in October. They were asked to submit the correct paperwork. If you ask them today, I seriously doubt they have those laptops. So how are those psychologists supposed to be getting this testing done that we were told needed these computers in October? We, in this LEA meeting, the most recent, we had the monitor come and say, "Why don't you have consistent representation from your special education department? You need the buy-in, your billing is under." Well, why do you think the billing is under? If they don't have the equipment they need, how are they going to do it? I mean, what do we expect them to do if the equipment that they have, which the director previously said was going to be outdated as of March, is not there? So I have a different concern on many levels. So I had a lot more I was going to say, but I think you all have seen my emails that I've sent as far back and I'm still waiting for an email response from that same director from three weeks ago because it has always taken myself going to her supervisor to get a response, which I don't think is right for anybody. You know, I may have the Spanish blood, but I'm not out there portraying it that way because I certainly feel like I'm the wrong skin color to get the attention that students need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Mr. Islam, do we have...
Yes, next Rosa Fuentes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rosa Fuentes. Wow. It's a lot of emotion when it comes to these points, huh? But I really... But I really want a congratulation to the teacher who stayed alive. I lost a sister. She was two years for the same reason. Nobody was there to give CPR, so we lost her. And I miss her so much. But I, I have met great, great employees from the bottom to top as a board member as well. And yes, there is so much to do here, so much. Everybody needs to get together and get to the point where what we want, because there is a solution always by fighting, in order things, putting back in the back and sending them to the bathroom, restroom, whatever, I don't know where. Things we not fix like that. We just getting angry. And every time I come here, I see people just upstairs staring at each other and upset. Why? Because we don't talk like humans mean. Why we don't have respect? It's okay to have the disagreement, but here is to serve the student first. And the board was elected to protect the students. Parents are here to protect the students, and employees have a job because they are working with the students. If there is employees who doesn't like to go with the students, maybe it's not a job that you need to have. Maybe you start looking, start looking in different fields. Because it's okay, we made mistakes. When I decided to be a mom, I was so excited and said, "Whoa, I can't wait to be a mom." But when I had my son, at the second day, I figured I was going to be hard because my son had to go back to the hospital. And for there, he got back to the hospital, back to the hospital, and now he's saving. Thank God, he's in the level that he is. And have two more, so. It's very difficult, but here, definitely, we need to go together for the students. And that's the priority always, I always say. Student first, and employees need to get the paper when they sign the contracts, what they're going to be doing, and follow that. If there is not this new contract, then you have the right to complain. But if it's not, then you should do it. It was apparent, we had obligation as well. Because I don't send my children to school to be teach, to be, do everything by the teachers. Because I appreciate so much teachers. I have seen next to one wonderful teacher here for Rialto Middle, Mrs. Park. He been a teacher for two of my children. He's a great teacher. I take that good things they have. And that bad things they have, I put in the side. And I'm not going to steal a little bit of time if you can give me one minute more to address a little bit. And this is going to be about transportation. Now that we had, the weather is coming really hot. But in April, one of my son, he's in Carver High School right now, he was riding the bus and the bus driver to him. You cannot ride the bus because you don't have the idea. Okay, I understand. He needs to have the idea, the idea to ride the bus. But he didn't have it that day. But he didn't, he was not sent to the office to get a permit to ride the bus. The bus driver, she was a sub to the day, he was not a normal bus driver. So she didn't know him, but everybody knows that he ride the bus. So she didn't let him ride the bus. He has to walk from the Carver High School to my house, which is really far. Carver has two foot heels and a round seat, it's far. He walked. And he called me, "Ma'am, can you pick me up?" I was in the hospital that day. That day, I had really bad seizures. They sent me to the hospital. My life is not going to stop. I had to do what I had to do so to survive every single day for my children and for to do what I love to do. This is my passion. Be here, help, I love it. And I appreciate every single you, your job. Mr. Fuentes, thank you so much for to be all here. You have been. And I thank you, Mrs. Kelly as well. With your great experience, teacher, principal, you had knowledge that we needed. And Ms. Walker, there is a big mini area that needs to be addressed because I'm not here to speak for Latino, I speak for African-American, and so and so. It's not just about me, it's about everybody. Ms. Rayala as well, you're such a, have a big heart. And when we can talk, I know we can talk to you and when you listen. And Mr. Martinez, I see the support you. I feel like you're not there for us. I have to say what I feel. Thank you so much.
Next, Russell Silva.
Good evening, board members, administration, and the audience. My name is Russell Silva. A coalition is an alliance of individuals formed as one or a partnership of groups designed to pursue a common goal. That is the goal of the Rialto Community Coalition. A group of concerned citizens trying to align ourselves with the problems and the issues that are facing this community, but more specifically, those issues facing the youth of our community. We started as a few adults, just meeting together, trying to come up with ideas and maybe establishing programs to help the kids keep themselves off alcohol, tobacco, and drugs. One of the first events we did was to do the sober skater event last November down at the skate park here. And it was pretty successful. We had quite a few children actually sign up to actually pledge to be sober. But as we were going on, we were realizing that, you know, as an adult, I can come up with ideas. But many times, the kids will look at us and say, "What are you thinking?" So we decided to start including the children in this. So much so that we're actually going to have, like Marcela here, we're actually going to have children on our board in order to help make decisions. So we're not, we don't want to be defeated by the goals that we set as adults. We want to be successful as a group, as a coalition. On May 2nd, we had a Positive Image Event that the police department actually came in, and they talked about the hazards of texting and driving. It was a great event. We had over 150 people, a mixture of adults and children. It was fantastic. So this group started out with like about five or six. We have now expanded to about 30 members, which include students. And we're really excited about the partnership we have. The next thing we have coming up, we've actually partnered with Coffin Nuts. And it's going to happen at, it's called the Kickback Event, and it will actually be happening this June 23rd, where they will be closing down a part of their parking lot and opening it up for different types of people to start expressing ideas and getting the children more involved in doing something that's going to be positive for their lives. It's going to be from 6 to 8 on the 23rd and a half supply. So I would like to hand out to you. We also are, we want to, what we want to do is we want to change the image of what's going on in Rialto so that the kids can feel that they're safe, have a safe venue for them to attend to, and be able to just kind of be themselves, but yet not have to worry about other elements around them. We want to change it so that not just the kids, but actually the people that live in this community and have lived here for years to not be shamed anymore to say, "I live in Rialto." One of the hardest decisions that we'll ever face is choosing whether or not to walk away or to do more. And that's what we're here for. Thank you.
Next, Jose Franco.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
I'm here representing a group of parents, concerned parents, from Fitzgerald Elementary. I received a call from a group that was very concerned and distraught. They had tried to address an issue, gone through what they felt were the appropriate levels of the chain of command through the school's own administration, even up to the board through email, and had gotten no resolution when it comes to dealing with the issue that was mentioned earlier, the fourth grade teachers. The parents are in a position where they decide to either leave the school or subject their kid through this gauntlet that's the fourth grade there. And when it comes to the parents that are here today, these parents are volunteers like myself. They see these teachers every day, how they interact with the kids, how they interact with other parents, how they interact amongst themselves. These parents here know. They know without the shadow of a doubt what kind of teachers are waiting for their kids in fourth grade. They're terrified. So much so that they've tried to leave the school like many other parents do in the annual fourth grade exodus. They leave. They'd rather go somewhere else, change their routines, their morning routines. They've got commuting issues. They've got to put their kid in a new school, make new friends. They have to maybe go to a school where they don't have an after-school program, maybe pay for childcare. All of these things have to change because nobody's doing anything about the fourth grade staff in Fitzgerald Elementary. This is not fair to the kids. This is not fair to the parents. And inaction is not an excuse. We all need to get together. We need to make this happen before the school year starts. We need to have new teachers in place that will make the parents feel confident that their kid is going to get a quality education in a setting that allows them to feel relaxed and comfortable enough to learn and succeed. These parents are frustrated. They've tried for years to get this change to happen, and it hasn't happened. And I don't want to be part of this cycle of negligence. We all need to work together as a team, all of us here today, to make sure that the children have the best environment possible. We have a petition of some of the parents that were brave enough to put their names down that want this change to happen. We need to have this addressed as expeditiously as possible simply because we cannot allow this to go on any further. If you guys want any additional feedback, please, I'll be here. I'm more than happy to speak to anybody on an individual level. I'm very passionate about making sure that this change happens. This affects, these parents are leaving the school. And it affects even the parents that stay here as volunteers. We don't have the same people to work with anymore on projects for the kids. You know, and these are parents that are volunteering, that are helping. They go somewhere else, we lose those resources. People that are contributing to the school. We're missing out on all of that because we're not acting on it. We've got parents that are trying to leave, and then they say they jumped through the hurdle of the schools that are trying to go to that are impacted, say they don't have space for kids. And then they find out that other people get into those same schools that they just got denied from going into, and they don't understand, they feel frustrated. They say, "I'm trying to get out of this school. They don't let me go. They let this other person go, and now I'm stuck with my kid here." And it's very discouraging. If you could also look at this process of how these parents are better helped and facilitated when it comes to making that selection, that would also help them because I know that they don't always have the opportunity or they don't always have the means of, or, you know, due to work, maybe fear of communicating these concerns. They may not always come up here and approach you guys. They may just choose to suffer in the shadows or just up and go. And at least make it easy for them to go if that's what they do. I mean, we have to address this problem in every level possible. So I would appreciate if you guys would take very, very deep and honest consideration and see that all of the parents that are here are serious about this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franco. Mr. Islam, do we have another speaker?
Yes, Mr. Fuentes. Next person, Allison Hannah.
Are they all the same, or do they all go together?
They're the same.
They're all the same.
There's another one there.
Good evening. Good evening, board members. Okay, good evening, board members, interim superintendent, Mr. Islam, and audience. My name is Allison Hannah. I'm a school psychologist with Rialto Unified School District. I've been employed for the past 15 years. I am actually a product of Rialto. I went to Morgan Frisbee and graduated from Eisenhower High School. So this district is near and dear to my heart. I would like to say that throughout the 15 years working in the special ed department, we have been through several changes with directors, administrators, coordinators. And I want to say that this year has been the most difficult year I have had as a school psychologist. We had a lot of obstacles. It was a very trying year, very stressful, very emotional for myself and my colleagues that are standing with me. And I just wanted for all of you to have our perspective. I know a lot is said about the department from others, but we have not spoken. We are not a department that complains very often. We're not one. We stick to our job and we get what we need to get done because we are incredibly busy. So for us to be here tonight is not a usual activity for us. But I just wanted everyone to understand the struggles that we went through this year. And when I felt I did not get the support from those in my department, I was able to get support from interim superintendent, Mr. Islam, Tom Halderson, Dr. D'Souza, and also Erin Rogers and Rhonda Kramer in the Personnel Department. Thank you.
Next, Brad Malinowski.
Good evening, everyone. I have to bring the microphone down for me. Okay, I just want to start by saying I've been a school psychologist for 33 years. Or 32, I've lost count. Started back in Maryland. Now I've been in Rialto for 21 years. I love this district. I love these students that I work with. I find them just immensely, immensely joyful to work with. I do also want to say that I acknowledge and respect what these parents are going through. I said to a parent today, "You know, you guys have that child for the rest of your life to care for." And I get that. And I want to say that for our department, this year has been very awkward and just kind of cumbersome. And I just feel like it's been, the leadership hasn't been there. But I do want to acknowledge our two coordinators in the back there. I think that these guys have worked there, you know what's off. And they are here, like, I feel like it's 16 hours a day. I feel like I can text them. They text me at 9:00 and 10:00 o'clock at night. And so I want to say I appreciate that. With the director, it's been very, very awkward and inconsistent. And when you have something that's inconsistent, that doesn't give the team a good message. We are a group that stands up and does what we have to do. We work whatever it takes. We care about it. I also did some parent training. And several months ago, I was called in at the last minute to do it by the director, which I said, "Hey, I love talking in front of people. I'll get up there and do it." One parent showed up. We need more participation. And one thing I learned through that presentation is that a lot of people don't even quite understand what we do as a psychologist. They don't even understand the difference between a psychologist and a psychiatrist and a person in another occupation. So we've got to get way down to basics here, and I really, really want to help people with that. And with that, we can't do it without really good, solid, consistent leadership. I'm not here to bag on anybody personally. This is just the way it is. It's been tough. I've known my friends and colleagues for many, many years. These are people of integrity. I would go, I put my life on the line for that. We are, we have a lot of integrity. We need more of us. We cannot handle this huge quantity of students. The national standards are we should have one psychologist for every 500 to 700 students. What do we have here? About 1,000 to 2,000. I'd love to be in there counseling these students. Yeah, and sometimes I've had to counsel students about a teacher giving them a hard time, as this lady was just um, discussing here. You have the support of the psychologists in the district. We get what you're up against. Please help and support us so that we can help you. And I'll tell you one last thing. In this world, we're in big trouble if we don't start, start loving each other. Everyone knows that I'm a big news junkie. And we better start loving each other because we're going downhill fast. Thank you.
Next, Carolyn Bryant.
Thank you for allowing us uh, the opportunity to speak tonight. I don't know how much more I can add. My colleagues, I, I, I'm near tears. This year has been so tough for us. We have worked tirelessly over the past few years. And it has not gotten, it's not getting any easier for us. We need your support. I do thank you, uh, superintendent, interim superintendent, uh, Islam and um, Dr. De Souza. You guys have listened and you've heard us. We appreciate your support. But please understand, it has been tough for us. We are trying to work under conditions that are really, really awful. I mean, I have had computer problems all year. I've been trying to hold meetings without my report because they disappeared after being up all night writing them over and over. Not them not saving, them just disappearing. We need support. We need materials. We need help. Thank you.
Next, Karen Sanchez.
Good evening. My name is Karen Sanchez and I currently have a child at Fitzgerald Elementary also. And um, I was a little hesitant to come up here because I didn't know if it was gonna matter anyways. But here I am and I just wanted to say that I too have an encounter, had an encounter with Mrs. Budak, the fourth grade teacher, when I was in the copy room making copies for another teacher, which I love. I love volunteering. I'm there. I help all the elementary, the lower grades. I help them all. They, they're very welcoming. They, they like our help and I enjoy helping them. They have a hard job. So I'm in the copy room and she wants to know who I was, so I let her know. And I hadn't personally met her one-on-one before. And so then I said, "Oh, well, what grade do you teach?" And she says, "Fourth grade." I then say, "Oh, well, my child will be in fourth grade next year." And you know, she says, she looks at me and she tells me, "Well, you don't want me because I am the meanest teacher there is." And I just look at her and I'm like, "Is she joking?" Or, straight face, straight face just could be. And I'm like, "How am I supposed to take that?" You know? I mean, I just looked at her and I just said, "Oh, okay." You know, um, you know, and then basically, you know, I got my copies and left because, I mean, what are you supposed to do with that? So then, I put in a transfer. I decided because when I went to my child's teacher and I asked, "Who do you recommend for next year?" My teacher said, "I wouldn't put him with even, with any one of those. If it was my child, I'd be transferring out of here." So then that like struck me like, "Okay, so what do I do?" So then I put in a transfer. I got denied, okay? Later to find out, some other parents put him in after me and got it, accepted. That kinda bothered me. But I let it go, okay? You know what, God, if this is where you have me, I'm gonna make it the best year. I'm gonna do what I can to help. But then, it's like, it's scary 'cause like, who am I putting my daughter in there with, you know? And then, so I approached the principal with it, I, with my concern, you know? And, and this is the second time I heard this. "Oh, well, that's just her dry wit. She's just like that." Well, to me, that sounds like, and each one of those teachers are very tired of teaching maybe or rundown or need a break or some, I'm not sure. But how unwelcoming for a parent, how must it be for those kids behind closed doors? What's going on in there? I don't know. Maybe nothing. Maybe it's all good, but it wasn't welcoming for me. So I just want it to be heard, and I've never done this before, so if I'm not following procedure or whatever, just tell me. But I just wanted to be heard because it bothered me. It bothered me. I went to my husband, "What do we do? You know, where do we go? We're denied where we, you know, where we thought would be a good place and now we're stuck with this." And I said, "Okay, then we gotta make it the best it can be." And so now I'm here to try to help to make it the best it can be. Thank you for hearing me.
That's all.
Next, we go to items on the agenda. Any person wishing to speak on an item on the agenda will be granted three minutes.
Celia Zelia? Again, you didn't mark either on agenda or not on agenda, so I don't know. It's blank.
It's okay. It's, it's okay.
Yeah, the same, I don't know where, where to place. These are all, I got a number of requests that, none of them says on or off. I don't know.
Buenas noches, board members. Mr. Montes, President of the Board, Mr. Islam, Superintendent Interino. Este, voy a, voy a leerlo en español y la señora Ruiz lo va a leer después en inglés nuestro mensaje. Y audiencia, buenas noches a todos. Somos padres de Amigos Unidos, grupo de apoyo para padres de niños especiales. Y estamos aquí porque hemos escuchado que la directora de Educación Especial será removida de su puesto. Y eso nos preocupa porque otra vez están pensando sus intereses personales, no en los estudiantes. Conos, desconocemos las razones por las que tomaron esta decisión. Pero nos gustaría que nos tomaran en cuenta a los padres porque al final cuando toman decisiones equivocadas, los más afectados en Educación Especial son los estudiantes, nuestros hijos. Les pedimos que reconsideren su decisión porque si tomaron esta decisión por problemas personales dentro del departamento, eso lo pueden resolver entre el personal y nuestros niños no tienen la culpa de sus problemas personales. Los problemas domésticos resuelvanlos ustedes. Nuestros niños especiales no tienen por qué salir afectados por sus malas relaciones personales. Quiero que sepan que los padres estamos muy preocupados porque otra vez estaría el Departamento de Educación Especial a la deriva. La señora Del Rio es muy profesional y deberían de darle otra oportunidad porque ya en el pasado, también por falta de apoyo, se fue Mr. González, que era también tan buen profesional y excelente director. Por favor, reconsideren porque de la forma en que se están haciendo las decisiones de Educación Especial, nunca va a funcionar, nunca va a funcionar el Departamento de Educación Especial. ¿Y qué pasa con las recomendaciones de Figma, con el Task Force, con el comité para resolver problemas de Educación Especial? Les pido a la Mesa Directiva una reunión con los padres de Educación Especial para que nos escuchen nuestras preocupaciones. Ya en el pasado, la mesa se reunió con nuestro grupo para escucharnos y fue muy exitosa porque se resolvieron los problemas de Educación Especial. Y nuevamente les doy las gracias por escucharnos y sabemos que podemos contar con nuestra Mesa Directiva. Aprovecho también para, para agradecer al doctor De Souza por su apoyo a la Educación Especial, a mi Valenzuela también, muchas gracias por ayudarnos. Eh, y también recordarles la celebración anual de los sacramentos de los niños especiales el próximo domingo veintiuno a las tres de la tarde en la Catedral San Bernardino. Será un honor contar con su presencia.
Okay, good evening, board members. Board President, Mr. Montes, interim superintendent, Mr. Islam and audience. We are parents of Amigos Unidos, a parent support group for children with special needs. We are here because we have been informed that the Director of Special Ed, Mrs. Norma Del Rio, will be removed from her post and that raises concerns. This action concerns us, concerns us as it appears that you are taking, you are thinking of personal interests and not of our students. The reasons for these decisions are unknown to us. We would like, however, as parents, to be taken in consideration. The most affected by wrong decision in special education are our students, our children. We ask for the, for this decision to be reconsidered. If this decision was taken due to personal issues within the department that can be resolved within personnel, our children are not to blame for your personal issues. Domestic issues should be handled internally and our special needs children should not be left affected by your poor human relations. We, the parents, are highly concerned that the Special Education Department is left without a director and leadership. Mrs. Del Rio is very professional and knowledgeable and should be given another opportunity. In the past, due to the lack of support, we have lost professionals like Mr. González, who too was an excellent director. Please, please reconsider the way decisions are being made in Special Education Department. Well, or the Special Education Department will never be successful. What happened to the, what happened to the recommendations by Figma, Task Force and the Problem Solving Committee for Special Education? I asked the Board for a meeting with the parents of Special Education to listen to our concerns. In the past, the Board has met with our group to listen to our concerns and it was very successful. Many issues in Special Education were resolved. Thank you for listening. We know we can count on our Board of Education. I take this time also to thank Dr. De Souza for your support in Special Education as well as Ms. Valenzuela. And also to remind you of our annual um, celebration for sacraments for our children with special needs this Sunday, June twenty-first, um, at Our Lady of the Rosary Cathedral in San Bernardino. And we will be honored by your presence. Gracias. Thank you.
Next, Marner Ruiz.
Mr. President, uh, we've, we've achieved the twenty minutes. So if anyone on the Board wishes more, we are supposed to um, take a vote to see, you know, let me motion to add time, another twenty minutes if necessary, to, to listen to everything, but we'd also need a second and then a, a Board vote. Other than that, Special Ed needs to...
And I would make a recommendation too, in, in addition, because we could, we can see a show of hands of how many people would like to speak. Maybe limit to one minute for each person. Everybody can say something.
How many more cards do you have?
I have four more.
Four more?
I think the others are standing up in support of the speaker.
Okay, wouldn't be a bad idea to raise hands just to see who would like to speak. Because you've got four there. I have four more requests.
Are you making a motion to set a limit, set a time limit?
To extend the limit.
Well, we don't have a, we don't have a time limit currently.
Twenty minutes per Board policy.
For it, when, the same topic?
Yes.
So I'll, I'll second that. I'll second that.
Which we're just spending more time discussing that.
Okay, would you like to make the motion to extend the time?
I made the motion to extend the time.
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, Marner Ruiz.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for that vote. My concern as a parent and also we are here to, you know, address the issues, not only for the lack of consideration of our students, which is always the bottom line. You know, when you guys are sitting there and just like another speaker's, you know, said the same thing. You guys are sitting there and you're, you have the best interest for our students. You know, we wanna believe that. I truly believe that. But we need to see more actions. The fact that we can sit here and we can talk until we turn blue or we can just have the three minutes that we have and every, you know, but not until we see actions being taken care of, that's when we believe you. And again, all I hear is just a lot of, lot of talk. But we need to take care of the Special Ed Department. They need a lot of support. You do have amazing workers there. You have amazing secretaries, psychologists, coordinators, you know, file clerks, copymakers, every person there. But they need a lot of support, which is something that's lacking there. You know, in every way, financially, ev- everything. You know, the fact that they don't, you, you know, you guys don't see it because you guys are not out there. All you hear is from emails, and twenty thousand emails that I'm sure you're getting, you know, and yet, just because you don't respond to one, "Oh, my God." You know, the world's gonna end. Well, that's not, that's not it. You know, you really have to be out there and see what's really happening. See what a lot of, yes, a lot of IEPs that are compliance. We have a lot of issues that we need to take care of, which we, we, I feel like we're wasting time on taking care of other things that can wait. But the one thing that cannot wait is our students' education. That time you cannot take back. For every minute, for every month, while we wait for a service, for something to be approved for our students, you know, speech therapy, for example. You know, we wait months and months and sometimes even a year, personally speaking. And then we, my, you know, my student lost that whole year. How do we bring that back? You can't. You lost it. And then what do we hear? Oh, well, we didn't get the approval. So we need to finally get together and find out where the ball starts and who drops the ball. You know, responsibility, and I think that's something that we need to look into. Forget this friendship, forget you're my friend, because that's where everything happens. If you're my friend, we're not gonna take care of it. If you're my friend, we'll give you this. And you know exactly what I'm talking about. So please, let's stop this friendship stuff. Friendship stays outside. This is business. If you're my friend, you'll understand that I'm not gonna do you favors. Thank you.
Next, Marbella Cortez.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Marbella Cortez. Soy madre de tres niños de educación especial.
Good evening. My name is Marbella Cortez. I'm a mom to a three, a year old that's a special ed student, a child.
She has three kids with special needs.
Okay. Thank you.
Y el día de hoy, y el día de hoy estoy, el día de hoy quiero mencionar que mi hija Yanaira Cortez no asiste a clases desde enero de este año. Déjalo leer.
And today, I would like to mention that my daughter Yanaira Cortez is not assisting her classes since January of this year.
Debido a que la clase que le corresponde en Rialto High School fueron negligentes con ella.
And the reason is that the classes that, that she was supposed to correspond, they were not, there were negligence towards her.
Ella has, ella asiste a clases del condado y ha tenido varias, y he tenido varias juntas de IEPs, juntas formales e informales.
And she has had, uh, and assisted IEP classes at the county level and has had various um, IEP meetings. And uh, these meetings have been formal and informal.
A este tiempo, no he, no he podido, no ha podido reingresar ya que se menciona que el condado solo tiene dos clases para ofrecer y una de ellas fueron negligentes con ella.
And at this time, has, she has not been able to re, uh, reinstate, according to her own words. And um, as I mentioned before, as I mentioned before, in the county, um, they said that these two classes have been offered. One of the classes were offered to her, but they were negligent towards her.
Ellos han sido abusivos con ella, dejándola sin comer, mandándola sucia, mojada a casa en varias ocasiones.
Okay, um, and she has been neglected in such a way. She's been abused. They have left her without eating. They have left her um, dirty. She has been wet and in various occasions, she's been sent home like that.
Todo esto que menciono ha sido documentado hasta este día de hoy.
And all of this that I mentioned has been documented, including what I mentioned today.
Pero los resultados hasta ahora no, no han sido favorables para la niña.
And to this point, the results have not been favorable towards the child.
Yo les pregunto Mesa Directiva, ¿pueden ustedes ofrecerle algo a mi hija? Basta ya de abuso a nuestros niños especiales que siguen siendo ignorados y más cuando pertenecen a clases del condado.
And all of this that I'm... Let me follow her. And this has been a result and nothing has been done towards her. And I ask you, Board members, what can you do for my child? This is enough about the abuse towards the children, especially the children, that they continue to be ignored and up to what point they belong to this county.
Yo les agradezco, yo les agradeceré la atención a este caso para que me ayuden lo más pronto posible para reintegrar a mi hija en una clase apropiada. Basta, basta, basta de abuso a nuestros hijos y la intimidad a los padres.
And I would appreciate the attention regarding this situation, this matter, and that it would be able to help those children as soon as possible. And then you'd be able to give the appropriate classes to my child, stop, stop the abuse to my children, all the children, and the intimidation towards the parents. Gracias.
We have 59 seconds. And I just want to clarify some of the things that unfortunately was not interpreted the right way or translated the right way. Her daughter is in a county program that belongs to the school district. And this is, and this is an issue that some of you are very well aware of. It was brought up to the attention and nothing has been done. So like Mrs. Cortez mentioned, so her daughter has not been in school since January. The class that she was offered, one of those classes, was the same class where she was abused and all the neglect happened. So what a slap in the face for her to get offered the same classroom where her daughter was being abused and neglected. And again, some of you know exactly that this was happening because it was brought up to the attention. And again, nobody cared.
Perpetuum, everything the interpreter does, as professionals that we are, I'm sorry, in this school.
Repetimos todo de acuerdo a lo que dicen.
Sorry, it's not perpetuum.
Do you have any more? Yes, Mr. Montes, thank you. Beatriz Gomez.
Good evening, Board members and audience. I'm kind of nervous. This is the first time I come up to a meeting like this. I don't think I probably need to say much more. We're not having mentioned it at the first in regards of, you know, our kids being neglected, of, you know, like my daughter needing equipment and being in, you know, being it in the IEP and her getting it until the end of the year and still not having her equipment and, well, like some of the, you know, you know, services also being delayed because of Sälpa issues. You know, I don't think it's fair for her, you know, to be in a classroom where she needs equipment and for her not to get it and not it be provided to her till, like some of it till the end of the year. I feel like that is very unacceptable. And like, like right now, we are, you know, in summer school and whenever her equipment is having a chair for her to go to the restroom, well, she doesn't have it because the one that she did have is like broken. So it's kind of like saying, who cares? She has a diaper. She can go in that, you know. And to me, that is very upsetting. Where she is going to be changed, I don't like where she's going to be changed. It's in the health, where, you know, where I feel like anybody can just see. So I just, to me, it's just like revive, you know, just thinking of everything that still has, you know, that hasn't been done. And, and like they say, you know, like in regards of equipment and everything, it's just a systematic problem or, you know, that they don't know where it's, you know, they just have no answers for us and where, you know, it's at. I'm just, it's very upsetting and like I said, I wasn't prepared to come and speak, but I feel like if I didn't say anything, you know, it's not going to be heard. And just like her one-on-one aid situation also, you know, the whole year, she, you know, it's three-hour aids every time. She, you know, she has, you know, she has cerebral palsy and she has a hearing loss too. So she, she needs somebody that's there all the time, that, that knows her. And there's, you know, there was changes throughout the whole year. She needs consistency in regards to that. So she had a whole sub, the whole, you know, changing subs the whole year for, for morning and, and then till almost the end of the year, she had one permanent. So, and who knows what's going to happen next year because they say. But like I said, I think that, you know, we need to be heard and if we don't say anything, that, you know, nothing will be done and nothing has been done like this. Thanks.
Next, Patricia Ruiz.
Buenas noches, Mesa Directiva y audiencia. Yo también estoy aquí porque también me preocupa la educación especial, no solo la de mis hijos, pero la de todos los niños. Por favor, ya basta el abuso, el abuso a nuestros niños. Ya basta de ignorar a nuestros hijos y a nuestros niños. Gracias.
I'm going to give the rest of my time.
Good evening, Board members and the audience. I too, I'm here due to the, also the, because I'm worried about the education, special education, not only to my children, but also to those other children. Please, it's enough of the abuse towards our children and it's enough that they ignore our children.
Okay, I'm going to take the extra time again. I want to add that normally we're here and you see Mrs. Alaya and myself. And we usually are the ones that are speaking out for the parents. This time, we ask the parents, because this time you can see the faces of the actual parents that we speak for. That is not only just our kids, that we speak for everybody. We speak for all the kids. And this is something that we are asking for you guys to have this meeting. We can tell you all the concerns and everything because we are like the eyes out there. We see what's really happening out there. And I have to address it again. You guys don't see it. You can't. You know, I know it's impossible for you guys to see every little thing that happens. But the Special Ed, that's a major, major thing that you really, really have to get in there and take care of it. Please, we urge you to do that.
Por favor, les pedimos nuevamente que nos, que nos den la oportunidad de escuchar. No, Board member, la junta pasada, cuando ustedes nos dieron la junta solo para el Special Ed, fue muy exitosa. Logramos muchas cosas con ustedes. Ustedes nos escucharon y escucharon las necesidades de todos los padres y de nuestros niños. Por favor, les pedimos nuevamente que nos asistan. Queremos respetar también el tiempo de toda la audiencia que quiere hablar sus puntos. Por eso queremos, porque los especiales es intenso, es muy extenso, perdón, y las necesidades son muchas.
Usually, we go eight seconds. Okay, well, basically, long story short, they begging you, I'm not being invisible right now, for your help. And last meeting was very successful. They appreciated it. And they're basically begging again for your attention and your support. And they also, I'm sorry, they also want to excuse themselves and show their respect and that they took so much time to express how they felt.
Yeah, we just wanted to add that we do want to acknowledge that out of respect. That way, you can see that this is a very long time for us to take up here. But that way, you can see that we need that meeting separate. Because that way, we can take, you know, whatever time we need to, to let you know our concerns. Gracias.
Ms. Celia, you had a sleep. Are you speaking again or? Okay.
Hay otra persona. Do you have Mr. Rafael's?
No, I don't. I don't have sleep.
Okay. Don Rafael, si puede llenar una, si puede llenar una tarjeta, por favor.
She's going to get a sleep. Well, for a long time, as everybody knows, there's been problems with the Special Ed education program. I think, and there is, in the FISMA report, there were about 162 deficiencies with the, and are we, and my question is, are we moving at a rapid or at a consistent, you know, pace on resolving some of these things? Are we, are we doing that? Is it moving pretty slow in resolving a lot of problems, you know, that exist there? And are people being held accountable at different levels of, you know, at different, at different levels? Are teachers being held accountable, program directors and administrators? I think if we have a parent involvement component, I think there should be someone there that can be an advocate for parents and to monitor, monitor at, you know, frequently. And I'm sure that there's, things are being done. The program is being, there's assessment and there's, and evaluations are, are being done about the Special Ed, but it doesn't seem like, like things are working fast enough because parents are here with a lot of concerns. And some of these issues need to be resolved. And, and people held accountable in the Special Ed program. And, and that's all I want to say. But I, I think that in, that if we have a parent involvement component, as we know, that we need to some, we need someone there to represent concerns of parents. We need, we need that. And I want to say thank you very much for listening, Board members. I want to, I want to say that Mr. Islam has done a tremendous job in, in the school district as an interim superintendent. And, and I think the Board members are really working close now and doing a lot of great things here. Well, have a good night and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chavaria. Next, Celia Zeleal. Are you going to speak?
Sí, pero le puse que dentro de la agenda. Puedo hablar ahorita?
This is on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Buenas noches, nuevamente miembros de la Mesa Directiva, presidente Mr. Montes, Mr. Ilan y la audiencia.
Good evening, again, once again to the Board and to the President Montes and Mr. Islam, Superintendent Islam.
Estamos sorprendidos los papás porque estamos viendo en la agenda.
And the parents, as parents, we are also surprised because we noticed in the agenda...
Que están contratando a tres terapistas de lenguaje.
That you are hiring three speech therapists.
Y nos parece excelente.
And it seems to us that is excellent.
El problema es de que leemos que no tienen credenciales.
The issue is that we think or know that they don't have any credentials.
Y eso nos preocupa.
And that worries us.
Porque cómo podemos confiar en sus servicios.
And how could we trust in their services?
No sabemos si tienen experiencia.
We're not sure if they are experienced.
Y nos preocupa pensar por quiénes van a ser evaluados nuestros hijos.
And we are worried by whom our children are going to be evaluated by.
Por favor, les pido que pongan más atención...
And I please, I ask you to pay more attention...
...a las necesidades de nuestros hijos.
Towards the needs of our children.
Porque para nosotros es bien importante...
And for us, it's really important.
Saber por quiénes van a ser evaluados nuestros hijos.
To know by whom our children will be evaluated by.
Porque de esa evaluación...
Because of that evaluation.
Va a depender el servicio que le van a dar a nuestro hijo.
It's going to depend on the service that they're going to give our children.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
One more? Item on the agenda? Okay.
Good evening, once again. I've shared my perspective of the item that's not on the agenda. But on the agenda, J. 3.1. I understand everybody has concerns and so forth, but in black and white, to me, it has indicated that the Senior Director of Special Education has obviously willingly resigned. So I'm a little confused because of her wishes are stated here.
I'm sorry, what item was that? What, what did you say?
J. 3.1.
J. 3.1.
Resignation's about middle of the page.
You said Director, I'm sorry, what?
Senior Director of Special Education has obviously willingly resigned. So I don't understand the ploy of asking her to stay here if she's willingly resigned, obviously, in black and white that's submitted for approval for tonight. So I don't see her here saying that she wants to stay. I don't know if she's expressed that in other means, but that's just, you know, something a little puzzling. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Montes, I have one more person, but item not on agenda, so you already passed that item.
Okay, well, would the Board like to, one more?
Yes.
Okay.
I move that we hear the additional item that was not placed on the agenda.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Jacqueline and Pablo Arbietta. That is two names.
Good evening, Board members and audience. I have to speak today because about the issue of Fitzgerald with the fourth grade teachers. I have the same concern and I'm here to ask you to please to help us because it's not okay for my daughter to be afraid right now. My daughter has epilepsy and when she gets nervous, she gets her sisters. So that's my concern because if she's in that room with one of those teachers, I know my daughter is going to get worse. And I have the five oh four plan and... I'm sorry. I'm very concerned because I've been asking for help for the last five years and nobody have listened to me. And I'm very involved parent. You all know me. And I feel so disappointed. And I feel that I'm alone because I asked for the transfer. I was denied. Why? Why? Because it was, it was me, Jacqueline Urbietta. Because I have some of the other parents, they filled out the application after me and they were accepted. So that tells you something. That is because Jacqueline Urbietta's name wasn't that form that I was denied. And I think this is not fair because I've been in this district for, for the last 15 years, I'm paying taxes. These people are earning a salary because I pay taxes every single year. And I work very hard, very hard to pay those taxes. If I don't pay my tax, my taxes, I will lose my home. So I ask you for the last time to please to help me either assign another teacher for first grade.
For fourth.
Fourth grade, I'm sorry, or I want my transfer to cardiac as soon as possible, please. I'm asking you, please, I'm not here to fight. I'm here to ask you, please, because nobody have helping me. And I've been asking for this help for a long time. And I'm very supportive for all of you, for all of you, if you need me, I'm here. If you call me at the middle of the night and you ask me to come and help you with anything in the school to help our child, your kids, I'm gonna be the first one helping you because I'm here for our kids. I'm here for our kids. I'm not here for myself. I don't want credits, don't give me anything. I want the kids to get what they deserve because I'm tired. It's not fair for me that I'm being looking, I'm, I'm thinking to, to look for another house, to a different district because these problems are happening and nobody's helping. So I ask you, please, help me. And I expect you to contact me and give me a solution, please. Thank you.
Mr. Islam and Mrs. Valenzuela, I would like this situation immediately investigated and the report to, to the board as to what is going on and what this parent's options are as well as other parents, something's got to happen here.
Mr. Kelly and the board, we are working on it. Jacqueline and I had this conversation, she informed me.
That was a different issue, I'm sorry.
No, this.
Can you mention that issue right now?
No, this is your child transferred to cardiac, you talk to me. You talk to me, two separate issue, yes.
It's different issue.
Yes, but this is, we have knowledge, we're working on it, and I'd like to report back to the board.
Okay.
I'm sorry to take at least 10 seconds more. I never speak on any of the meetings. I respect all of you and, but enough is enough. I've been seeing my wife working day and night. I've been seeing my wife cooking tamales for the teachers. I've been seeing my wife doing anything, whatever she can do to help the school. And you guys know it. We know who we are. But as a husband, I'm not, I'm, I'm not gonna let my wife to be in that position. She's been under a lot of stress for the past weeks. We have a business, we have a family to raise, we're even thinking about moving out of the city to buy a new house. Because there's no action. Everything that you see here, board members and president, is the consequence of not taking action. These meetings are getting, are getting longer because we are not taking action. There is no excuse. There is no excuse for a teacher to be abusive to a child. There is no excuse, I'm sorry, I mean, there's nothing you can say. How can a teacher be, I mean, intimidating kids? My daughter, she told me, Daddy, you told me that you would protect me from anything because that's what I told her every day to all of my kids and she said, I don't want to go to school with that teacher, period. I don't want to go with that teacher, Daddy, I'm scared. We just want an answer. And we are, as you guys know, we are supportive to you, whatever you guys need, we are here. This city is gonna be the best only if we start working towards the benefit of the kids' education. We do whatever we can to help you guys and you know it. But it's time for you to take action. We need solutions in Fitzgerald School for fourth grade teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Just so the public knows, me and Mr. Islam have decided to move superintendent and board member comments directly after public comment. I know sometimes concerns are brought forth and sometimes parents and people from the community want to hear some kind of response and sometimes they have to wait throughout the whole end of the meeting to hear that response, if a response is even given. So we're gonna go ahead and change it from here on to have board member reports, comments, and superintendent reports and comments be given directly after public comment. We understand people want to go home and have things to do, have families attend to, so we will be addressing superintendent and board member reports and comments after public comment. Now we move on to the last item under public comment, comments from association.
Can I add one, one thing to that comment? We are also told legally we should not respond to public comment. So if you're waiting for something, you may not get an answer because legally we're not supposed to respond. That's what we're told.
I have to agree, it's, it's not true. We, we have the right to respond if we want to or not.
Let them know the advice we were given.
Yeah. Comments from Association Executive Board Members, Rialto Education Association, do we have any members from REA that would like to speak? Is there anybody coming down that hall? Do we have, next we go on to California School Employees Association, do we have anybody from CSEA that would like to take the floor? Thank you. Communication Workers of America, CWA?
Good evening, President Montez and interim Superintendent Islam. It's been very, very difficult time sitting here, listening to all this because as a substitute teacher in San Bernardino, about half my subbing is done in special ed. And I really feel for the parents. I also feel for the parents with the fourth graders. I really know that you guys will probably meet together and handle this situation very well. Know that we are going to be doing our negotiations with you. We were supposed to do it yesterday, but it was canceled due to unforeseen circumstances. So we will be starting next week. But right now I want to thank a particular person on the board because I asked her to do something and she did it for me and I want to share it with you all. So Marisol, will you please come up? I asked her to tell me what it was like being a student board member because as I have told you before, I am trying to get this done in San Bernardino. She gave me permission to take this letter and give it to the board members. And I think it would sound a lot better to let her read it to you because it is great. Marisol.
Hello, my name is Marisol Angulo and I am the proud Rialto Unified School District Student Board Member for the 2014-2015 school year. This position was an honor to hold and has taught me much about communication, diplomacy, humility, and overall the importance of respect. I believe holding this position brings an extremely beneficial experience to the student holding this position. It not only teaches responsibility, but also teaches the practice of liability. The student board member represents all of the students within the school district, which may cause some to feel pressure, but understand that this is what comes with holding this position. I have met and spent time with the past student board members and have all been eternally grateful of, have, have had this grand opportunity. This position helped open many doors and presented many opportunities for the future. As student board member, the student is treated as an actual member of the board. This means they receive all of the documents the board receives, such as a hard copy of presentations presented and documents presented. The student board member is asked to give preferential vote on items and is given an agenda like the rest of the members. As well as being present at all board meetings for the designated school year, the student shall be asked to be present at district-wide events representing the students of the district. Being the Rialto Unified School District Student Board Member for the 2014-2015 school year was such a memorable and educational experience for myself as a student and person overall. I came to love my school district and city much more than before. I truly hope that this position will soon be offered to students within their school districts for it is an amazing opportunity. Thank you.
So you see, you do offer things to students that really make a difference in their life. And I hope to be able to duplicate this in the San Bernardino area. But when I read this letter, I realized some of the things like, you know, liability, wow, you don't realize there can be a liability there, but you think about it. And she had to not only represent her school, but the other three schools. And it gets to be something that is very demanding. She has been here at all the board meetings, putting up with all your shenanigans, and I have to admire her for that. So I don't know who's gonna replace her, but I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher.
Next, Rialto School Managers Association. Alrighty, that takes us next to item comments from the interim superintendent.
Thank you, President Montez. Last, I think, two weeks ago, we had our high school graduation event. It was a great event. I want to thank every parents, community members, board members, I thank you, you being, spend your all day Sunday. It was a great event. I'm being proud to being with, with the community and board and staff. I want to thank our staff member for being present. It was a great event. No, it wasn't, you know, we, we did a one-day event. It was outstanding. I thank you all. Our summer school just started last Monday. We have 2,200 students enrolled in the program. The class at our Eisenhower High School is going well. And we, I thank the staff being there on Monday and yesterday to help the, to support the administrations, enroll the students, everything went well. So I just want to report this to the board. Our summer leadership conference is scheduled July 9th, 2015, at Rialto Middle School. I, I hope to see our board members can make it. It's a one-day event. We all managers will be, will be there and it will be a great event and we are, we are looking forward, I hope to see you if you can make it. I'd like to thank you, our, our student board members, being with us for the whole fiscal year, beginning 2014-15 school year. I wish you all the best to your next journey. We're gonna miss you.
Thank you.
In closing, I'd like to share some of my sincere appreciations and thanks to our school board. Board, you gave me this journey two years ago. I thank you for you having confidence, trust, and, and the journey was great, you know, and, and I thank you for your, your confidence in me to lead the district for almost two years during a lot of challenges we came over by now. But we have still a lot of work to do. Moving forward, I request parents, students, community members, community leaders, staff, board, we all need to be unified, we all need to work together. One thing in focus, our students, that's what we're here for. If we, that's not what we're here for, we shouldn't be here. If we cannot serve our students, I heard enough tonight. I don't disagree with you, I'm not saying you're right or wrong, but we need to be one team to build this community. This is a great community. I'm blessed to be here. I'm proud to be here. I, I, I hold my badge every day. I'm, I'm, I'm from Rialto. I'm proud of being Rialto. I'm proud to serve this board. I'm not shaming, but we have, we have a challenge, we have a problem. That doesn't mean that we cannot be unified, working together to resolve it. Every problem, there's a solution. I believe that. I believe that every day in my life. So I heard enough from parents, I thank you for coming forward, speaking to the board and to us. We listen, we respect your concern. We'll carry on. We, we will come, work together to resolve our stu, student issues and concern. You're not asking, parents, you're not asking, asking board to give you a job or positions, you're asking for students. This is our responsibility. That's what we're here for. Board trusts us as administrations, board appointed us, and we should be accountable. Yes, absolutely correct. Every one of us should be accountable, what we do every day, what's best for our students. We're not here to please anybody, we're here to do our job. And that's the charge board gave us, that's our fiduciary responsibility. I want to thank every one of you, your support for last two years, parents, students, teachers, staff, everyone. Without your support, I could not continue this journey. And I, above all, I want to thank board. Without your support, without your, your placing in this role, I could not serve you and I'm be proud of you that I served you last two years. And I, I'd like to continue to do that, anywhere, any place, anytime, I'm available for you, for community, for parents, anyone. Because I belong to this community, I'm part of you, I'm part of Rialto family, I call this one family. This is my second home. I go home and sleep, I come back here, spend quality time, 10 hours, 12 hours, 14 hours. I don't spend that much time with my family. So you are my family, you're my extended family. So with that, I want to thank everyone again, once again. I'm here, I, I plan to be here as long as you need me. And I, and I want to serve you, continue serving you at expected, expectation you have and make the difference for our students' lives. With that, I thanks again. Thank you, board.
Next we go to comments from members of the Board of Education. First and foremost, we'll go to our student board member, Ms. Marisol.
Thank you. This being my last board meeting, I would like to give my final thanks to the board, Mr. Islam, Ms. Joffrey, the associate superintendents, and every single person that works in this district. I want to thank them for such a joyous experience that's so memorable and honestly, I am, all of you guys hold a special place in my heart now and thank you for that. Thank you.
You hold a very special place in our hearts.
Thank you.
Next we go to board member, Mr. Joseph Martinez.
Thank you, President Montez. I'd like to thank the community for speaking up. Anytime our students are not served or are improperly served, it's, it's very disconcerting to, to myself and I'm sure the rest of the board. I know that when I hear these things, anger rises up in me as well. So, so much to the point that, you know, I want to jump up and down and get something resolved tonight. I guess all that to say that what you're asking is the right thing. The timeline in education, I have not seen that timeline met here or anywhere else. So there, there's committees that, that we spend time on and we listen and we resolve there, but don't implement. And I'm not sure whether we can fast-track that or not. One of the things that I do recommend is having a DVD burned for the incoming superintendent of tonight's comments. That way he can hear it right off the bat. I don't know if it's gonna resolve anything and I don't want to commit us to death, but it's important. There, there's questions that are left unresolved even for this board member. I know that we have county, county bill. I know that we have county, county buildings leased, or let me put it, let me correct that. We have district, Rialto, buildings leased to the county. Now, for me, it's a real gray area. Do those students answer to the county? I mean, are we caring for them as adults in Rialto? Yes, we care for every child. But to get an item resolved, does that go through us, or does that go through the county? I, I couldn't answer that if you asked me tonight, and I'm being totally honest. So one of the things that we could do is create a study, another special ed study session for the community, so they could get some of these questions answered correctly. This board member could then be, you know, taught what is correct. Because if we can do something to address the students that attend in the county programs, we need to do that. But if we don't have authority to, to resolve anything, then we need to hand that over to the county right away. As for, and, and that goes on down the line. I'm trying to be a little more concise, but I want you to hear my concern. Onto Fitzgerald. I can't tell you how I feel about it, because the words would be inappropriate. But let me say that I am definitely concerned and grieved. And let, let me tell it to you the way I tell it to the VISA people when they do something inappropriate, to my credit. I want to go up to certain teachers and say, please, hear this, as if I'm six inches from your nose, screaming at the top of my lungs. That is a resolve that I've got. And that is what I'm going to ask we move forward on.
Next, we go on to board member, Mr. Joseph Ayala.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. But the student is waiting at Condis School, but he's found that Rialto didn't.
Can I have say for him, or does the county have say? I don't know. Thank you.
Mr. Ayala, sorry about that. You have the floor?
That's okay. That's okay. I first want to thank all the parents in the community for sharing their viewpoints, their heartfelt messages, the advocates that are here, and the staff that came up, because it takes courage. I didn't have the courage when I was a teacher, come before a podium. I was worried about retaliation. I worked 34 years as a teacher. When I was asked, would you like to be on a school board? I said, I don't have any experience. I don't want to talk in front of people. I talk to kids, but not in front of the public. That's scary. And then a friend of mine came up and asked me if I would help him, and I said, I'm retired, why not? And I gave it a try, and I threw my hat in the arena. And earlier, there was some comments that sometimes we cater to those who pay our campaign statements. Well, being a teacher for those 34 years, I really, really wanted to do the best job I possibly could. And that was because I cared about the kids. And one of the strongest advocates that I know is in this room right now, and I almost used him to help me. And I said, no, this principal that's being tough with me, he needs a chance also to succeed. He says, I'll take him out if you want me to. And I said, no, I'm, I'm getting close to retirement. We'll give someone else a chance. But I came down here and went through a series of interviews with the Teachers Association, and, and I told them, when they asked me, do you have any questions of us? I said, not really. I'm one of you. I'm a teacher. Surely, you care about what you do? I trust you? And, and they said, thank you very much for the interview, and chose not to endorse me. Okay. It's all right. And my response was, whether you like it or not, I'm going to take care of these teachers the best I can. Because I know they're the caretakers of our children. And if those teachers are not supported, those kids are going to have a tough, tough time in those classrooms. They're their parents when you're not their parents. Wow. Heavy words. But yes, we do have some staff sometimes that slip through the cracks. They're stressed out. Maybe they should play golf. Go bowling. But I can tell you, it is, it can be a very, very stressful job. And also, when you're there, the stereo's playing, it's harmony, like that fine-tuned carburetor in a, in a, in an automobile. But if you turn it just a little bit, one way or the other, it doesn't run. We have important decisions to make tonight. And I respect every board member here, because eventually, they have to go home, they got to look at themselves in the mirror, they got to face the music, and they got to go to sleep. But I guarantee you, the decisions we make tonight will be in the best interest of children, in the best interest of people, to move this district forward. Because I really believe this district, if, if we choose to work together, and believe it or not, this is an example of working together. We're hearing from you. It's not a bad thing. So thank you again for sharing your opinions, and it's okay to disagree. Please understand that. Thank you.
Next, we go to board clerk, Ms. Tina Walker.
I just want to say, there's a saying about keeping the main thing the main thing. We are a school district, and our main thing is children. Educating kids. I mean, and now, since we have preschool programs, we're educating kids two years old. So two years old to what, 22? We can keep them up till about 22? So from 222, our main thing is educating children. And it should be that, and our vision should be that we are not just educating children, but cultivating great citizens as well, and giving the best towards our education system and what we deliver to our students, the best of our ability. And when our ability is lacking, we need to get better ability, right? But the main thing is children. There was a reason why, when the local control funding came about a couple of years ago, and the model for funding schools, and the LCAP, which is the Local Control Accountability Plan, had eight priorities, there was a reason why school climate and parent engagement were one of the eight priorities for the state, because they directly affect student achievement. If our goal is to have a great district and have great students who excel at the top levels, that we must have parent involvement and positive school climate. So at any point in time, when we are in discord in those areas, we're not keeping the main thing the main thing, which is our students. We don't have the luxury, the majority of us do not have the luxury of pulling our kids out of public school and putting them in a private school. We just don't. I thought I did for a hot second, until my husband, which would be past husband.
Husband.
Until my husband reiterated what our finances really looked like, and the fact that we were separating. So to really, to understand really what that looked like, so that private school education was not an option. And as an advocate and understanding that I too pay my tax dollars into this system to educate children, that the money that I pay should go to so that my children have a great public school education. And so we are here to make sure that we offer that opportunity for all children, regardless of ability. Regardless of ability, we have to offer that access. The school transfer situation, that has to do with access. Everybody doesn't have the same access, and we love to believe that they do, but they don't. And so where people are denied access, for whatever reason, that we have to rectify it. We are the only people who, we can't go out and see all 22,000 of our students, be at all of our campuses all of the time. So we do rely on input from our excellent staff, from professional staff, as well as our community and our citizens. And so it is our opportunity at this point to take that information and go back and help to, to carve and direct some, some directives for our staff to ensure that all of our students have access, so that nobody is denied any access to a great opportunity and a great education in our district. And that to help other people who need assistance in making sure that our main thing is their main thing, and we educate our kids with excellence. Thank you, parents and community, for giving your voices tonight, and help us to help you to make sure that we keep our main thing the main thing. Thank you.
Next, we go to Vice President, Ms. Nancy O'Kelly.
Good evening. And first, I'd like to put Ms. Walker's mind at rest, because all the studies have shown there's absolutely no difference in achievement between students who attend private schools and public schools. And I will always promote public school education, because this is the real world, and that's what they need to grow up in to be successful.
So, Ms. O'Kelly, let me just interrupt you just really quickly. Just to let you know, too, after even saying that, even thinking that, I realized too, too, that public education is the only way to go. My children are in public school regardless, and they will stay there. But that's why I became an advocate, to advocate for great education in the public system. So now, I'll release your mic back.
Yes, I want to thank all the parents for, for everything they said tonight. I mean, we want to help. We try to help, but we can't help unless we know what the problems are, where the problems are. And I feel very bad that some of you have repeatedly asked for help, and it hasn't gotten you anywhere. That's, that should not happen. I don't agree with any, any staff member being rude, disrespectful, or intimidating to a child. If that's their attitude, they really don't have any business being a teacher, because that's, that's not what teaching is about. So I don't really understand that. I'm hoping to find out more about that. Dr. D'Souza, I'd like you to look into and report back to us. I want to know exactly, in the county classrooms that are on our school campuses, who's in charge? I mean, who does what? Who orders supplies? Who does, you know, all of the necessary things that have to be done? Because until people know that, they don't know where to go. I also want to emphasize, I want the special ed children who have specific equipment and things written into their IEPs, they have to get those immediately. I don't know where the holdup was, but it doesn't do them any good to get it at the end of the year. They need to get it now. The other thing is the psychologists. My goodness, get those people what they need to do their jobs. Go and order a ton of laptops for them. That's ridiculous that we're living like we're in the Dark Ages. I don't know why they have not been ordered, you know, previously, but we're going to get them ordered now. And, oh, okay. I also want to say, to piggyback on Ms. Walker saying, keep the main thing the main thing, it's do what's best for kids. That was my motto, and one of the principals I worked with at Eisenhower High School, we always said, we're going to do what's best for kids. When I look at the board agenda every week, I look at these decisions that I'm supposed to make, and I ask myself, is this what's best for kids? Because that is our job, to do what is in the best interest of the children, and the parents, and the staff of this district. So I'm hoping we get there. I'd like to say, I had a wonderful day at the graduations. My feet were aching at the end, but it was all worth it. There's nothing like seeing those bright and shining faces come across the stage, and it just fills your heart with pride to see how excited they are. So good luck to all the graduates, including our dear Marisol, and we will miss you terribly. But it was a wonderful, wonderful day, and it's always, I mean, that's the culmination of what we do. That is the culmination of actually 13 years of education, walking across the stage, and it's just wonderful. I also want to wish all the daddies out there a happy Father's Day on Sunday. I hope you have a wonderful day, and I hope your children spoil you shamelessly. And I guess that's about it. I don't want to take up any more time, but thank you so much. It was, you know, I really appreciated hearing the comments you all had tonight, and, and we are going to take some action on this. Sometimes you have to understand, we have little challenges we have to get around before the real action takes place. It's like everybody, you know, we all want it to happen tomorrow. Sometimes it doesn't work that way, because there are other things interfering with it. But we are going to work on these issues and hopefully resolve them. Thank you, and have a great night.
Last but not least, I got a few things I wanted to just mention. First of all, the, the parents, the parent concerns that were brought forth today, both from Fitzgerald Elementary and regarding special ed. I don't know when, I don't know when our district is going to offer the help that, that is being asked of us. I've been on the board for four and a half years now, and it seems like we still have so much work to do, especially regarding special ed. We've done, we've done some, we've done a lot of progress. I don't want to take that away from anybody. I truly believe we've made tremendous progress. But I know that it's still, we still have a long road ahead of us, and we still have a lot of work to do. And I feel like my hands are tied. Not only am I on this board, I'm the board president, and yet I feel like my hands are tied. No puedo ser nada. People come to me, and what do I do? I refer them to the administration. That's the protocol. I'm not the supervisor-manager of this district, nor do I want to be. I just want to do my job as a board member. That's all I want to do. I just want to serve. So when complaints and concerns come forward to me, I direct them to the administration. I, by myself, cannot act alone. Yo solo no puedo actuar solo. Ninguno of those board members, none of us can act on our own. But we can act as a group, and for that, I take responsibility. Yo tomo responsabilidad. Because how many times do people have to come forward here and complain and cry their hearts out? I don't, I, sometimes I don't even want to be on the board anymore. If there's people that feel that they could do a better job than me, you can have my seat. I will give you the seat. You want it, ask for it. I'll give it to you. People come up here and criticize us, we're not doing this, we're not doing that, you're using so-and-so, you're not using who I want you to use, and that's fine. We can, I can deal with the criticism. I don't mind being criticized. But what I can't stand is the parents coming up here to cry their hearts out about their kids. The county classrooms, they're our responsibility. Those county classrooms for special ed are being ran on our schools, on our school sites. We're the ones responsible. And yet, we're paying the county to run them. We're paying the county to run them. They're not giving the services, or they're not treating the parents or the students the way they should be. They're not providing the education they're supposed to. They're not providing the education they're supposed to, and yet, we're still paying them in our house to do a bad job. We're ultimately responsible. We can't say no while the county, that's the county's classroom. That's the county's classroom. I'm sorry, I can't do nothing. I can't tell them nothing. You know, we could tell them, we can tell them, you're not doing a good job, thank you, but no thank you. Go somewhere else. We're the ones ultimately responsible. This district is the ones ultimately responsible, not the county. So, I would really like to just see and recommend that, we look at that, we look at the county contracts for special ed. If not, services are not being provided. We have our own trouble providing our own services, let alone, why should we pay for someone else to do a bad job? Regarding, regarding, regarding special ed, yo creo que es una buena idea tener una junta con los padres. I think it's a good idea to have a parent meeting with the school board. We've done it in the past. We can call for a special meeting and go down, and we can go to your house, and we'll sit on the other side of the table and hear your concerns. We've done it here, we did it four years ago, we can do it again. But I really would like to say, de veras me gustaría enfasar, I really would like to emphasize that. We need to do something, and it's not the administration's fault. We're the board, we're the leadership. Not the administration, we're the leadership. And I feel helpless at times. Me siento que no puedo hacer nada. Because legitimate concerns and complaints are brought forth, and I feel like I tell people all the time, I can't do nothing, I'm sorry, I can't do nothing, I'm sorry. And it's not fair for people to hear, we're going to do something, we're going to do something, we're going to do something, and it never happens. So, I myself, as a board member, am frustrated, and I don't blame any particular person or any particular department. But I myself am frustrated, so frustrated that at times, like I said, if anybody here wants to take my seat, I'll give it to you. I'll go, I'll go, I'll go to my family, dedicate myself to my family, which I'm sacrificing time to be here to help your families, help your kids, your, help our community. And my family understands that. I'd rather be holding my three-year-old right now, but I'm here, listening, I want to help. I'm here, working on this board, I want to help, but how can I do that if I feel like I can't do nothing, I feel helpless? So, I'm not here, I'm not criticizing the administration tonight. I'm asking my board colleagues, let's get on the ball, and let's move this district forward. We're the ones ultimately responsible. So, I hope that with new leadership, very soon, we start to head in a new direction in tackling these problems, and quick. I don't want at the end of this term, I don't want at the end of this term to have to hear the same concerns and complaints, and hear the mothers cry their hearts out about their children not being serviced or being mistreated. It's painful. It's a lot of weight, it's a lot of weight to carry, it's a big load for those of us who care. Regarding, regarding the psychologists that came forward, I want to thank you, but I also want to say that I'm deeply concerned. If you don't have the materials you need, if you don't have the supplies you need, you're up all night typing and writing, and the next day, it's not even saved. Well, no wonder we have problems with special education. We have IEPs that need to be met, we have IEPs that need to be completed, we have IEPs that need to be transferred, but if the stuff's not being saved on your computers, because you have old stuff, outdated stuff, which I know we do, because the board member's office has the oldest computer in the entire district, I'll tell you that. So, the concerns of you not having the resources and the materials that you need deeply concerns me, all of us. And we need to look at that. And for people to say, we're spending too much money on special ed, we're spending too much money, you know, on the kids, we're spending too much money on laptops for the kids, or iPads, or whatever, that's not fair. We have to pay, we have to, we have to fix the problems. And I'm not saying throwing money at the problem is a way to fix it, but if there's resource, if there's materials that are needed for the staff to do the job that they have to do, they have to get that. I want to, I want to also say that I attended graduations. I wanted to start with the good news first and the bad news at the end, but now, I had to go backwards. I want, I attended graduations, and graduations reminds me of why I chose to be a board member. Shaking those kids' hands, giving them their diplomas, seeing the smiles on their faces, it reminds me of what we're here for. That should be the end result. Those special education kids and regular public education kids that walk up on that stage and get their diplomas, that should be the ultimate goal of this district, and it is. And it still is, as far as I'm concerned. Every child and every family that attend those graduations, that's a win. That's, we completed, we completed our job. Whether they came from K through 12, or whether they just came at any other time, we got them through the end, and the staff, and the district, and everyone deserves a round of applause for that, including the parents. That's what we want to get to. In the meantime, we've got things we've got to work at, and I recognize it, and I'm sure this board recognizes it. And I'm sorry to keep telling you guys every time and time again, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're working on it. I sound like, I feel like a broken record. But if anything, if I can, if there's anything I can do, I can at least voice my frustrations as well. I can at least do that. If I can't do nothing else, as board president, as a board member on this board, I can at least also voice my concerns, also voice my frustrations, because I'm very frustrated as well. And as much as I want to just not be on the board, I remind myself, this is why I'm here. It's real easy for people to say, you know what, I don't want to deal with this, I don't want to, I don't want to even hear it, I don't want to, I don't want to go there. Well, somebody has to go there. And it's not an easy job. It's not an easy job. It's practically a volunteer position. But even if it was a well-paying job, it's a tough job. So, again, I ask for patience, pido pacencia, as much as it hurts, I ask for patience, because after all, we are starting a new chapter in this district. We are. We will be beginning a new chapter. Now, how that chapter's written, it's going to determine all of us, not just the board, everyone. Everyone from the board, and the administration, the school sites, the parents, the students, everyone. And I heard it time and time again, we need to work together. Yeah, we need to work together. Of course, we need to work together. We can't expect just one single person to do everything, or one single department head to do everything, or one single director to fix all of the problems. But again, I want to thank you guys for coming out tonight, sharing your concerns, and I hope it helped, that we didn't make you guys wait till the end of the meeting to hear what some of us want to share with you. And we're going to continue to work hard. Whether things happen or not, time will tell. Si las cosas se arreglan o no se arreglan, el tiempo nos va a mostrar. Time will tell. But I can assure you that most of us up on this board are trying our best. And it helps, it helps to hear from you, because it shouldn't have to get to that point. It should, they should be resolved, or at least at the very least looked at, looked into, before you have to come and share it here. Not because we don't want to hear it, because it shouldn't happen in the first place. I want to also wish all the parents, todos los padres, a happy Father's Day, and also, Marisol, what can I say? You've seen us go through good times, bad times, fast board meetings, really long board meetings, you know, and I really appreciate the words that you say, because I truly believe that, as a student board member, you're able to see, witness, and pick up tremendous amount of knowledge that will help you in probably another city, or, you know, town, or state, that you might, you know, be interested in local governance. But I wish you well in your, in your education. We know you're going to make us proud. Thank you for everything, and thank you for always being here. With that, I have nothing else more to say. I just want to get through this business that we have to conduct now after this, and hopefully, we won't get out of here too late. But, thank you y gracias, thank you. Next, we go to public hearing, item D, open public hearing. Do we have a motion to open public hearing?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any person wishing to speak on an item on the public hearing agenda will be granted three minutes. Item number one, public hearing. Pursuant to the requirements of Governmental Code and Board Policy, the Forum for Public Disclosure of Proposed Collective Bargaining Agreement AB 1200, Statutes of 1991, Chapter 12, 13, as revised AB 2756, Statutes of 2004, Chapter 25, Government Code 3547.5, between the Rialto Education Association, REA, and the Rialto Unified School District Board of Education, is hereby posted in compliance with the legislative requirements for public notice. Do we have any person wishing to speak on this public hearing item? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Vote by board members?
Aye.
Consent calendar items. All items on the consent calendar will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by Board of Education members or their interim superintendent for individual action. Approved consent calendar items, reference E through J. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Do we have any discussion or polls?
Poll. H 9.1 for an amendment, simple amendment.
H 9.1?
And it's removing one word. Would you like me to continue, or, or do you like it?
You said you want to pull H 9.1?
Yes.
Okay, we'll get to it.
Thank you.
Do you have another item?
That's it.
Does anybody else have any items? I'll go ahead and pull J. Do we have any other polls? With the exception of H point nine, H 9.1 and J 3.1, could I have a motion to approve all other items?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Preference vote by student board member?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item H point, H 9.1.
Alrighty, thank you, Mr. President. At the very bottom, the last line before the submitted by, I'd like to remove the word evening. That way, it does not limit them from serving Saturday or Sunday. Things like the annual parent summit would be excluded from this contract. So, if we pull just the one word, evening, it would then read plus any additional events. And I wish to submit that amendment, and I make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to strike the word evening?
Yes.
Second to the last word on reference H 9.1. Do we have a second for that? All in favor of striking the word evening from the last, second to the last word on that item?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. With the amendment, do we have a motion to approve item H 9.1?
Move to approve item H 9.1?
Second.
As amended?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next, we go to item J 3.1. Do we have a motion to approve item J 3.1?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I don't think we can, it's a personnel.
You know, I just, I just want to say for the record that we are advised and encouraged not to discuss any personnel-related matters, and I'm not going to do that, but I do want to explain it. I personally will be voting in favor of item J 3.1, with the exception of accepting the So, I think the way to go about approving that item, that entire item is...
Take a vote.
Take a vote.
Do you wish to take the entire item, and then the line item, or the line item first?
I guess the line item first.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just comment. Board policy, if the public wishes to know what's going on, please check the board policy, which is available to the public online. Do we have a link to that on the website?
Yeah, we have a gamut online, and we can give access to anyone that like to review any policy, this is available.
Yes, the sign-in is Rialto, password public.
We can just do the entire item. So, you just get a first and a second to...
Can I have a motion to approve item J 3.1 under resignations?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all in favor of accepting, do we have a motion to accept item J 3.1 for the remaining portions of it?
We did the whole item.
We did the whole.
Oh, I heard you say resignations. That's fine.
Well, that is, the whole item is...
That's all four, three or four resignations, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Hold on, now, now, I want to make sure for the record that item J 3.1, everything else that is included, and...
We did make the motion for the entire, for the entire item, yeah.
Oh, it's the whole page?
Right.
Ah, I got it.
Yeah.
Okay, well, it was approved, so we're fine.
Yeah, I just, I think there was a confusion, because you mentioned resignations, but we just want to clarify for the record that it was the entire item, J 3.1.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we go to item K. First item is to approve a contract amendment number three to employment agreement between the Rialto Unified School District and Mohamed Z Islam. Do we have a motion to approve item K1?
So moved.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, but I believe we have items to report out to the public.
Not yet. Next, item K2 is to award bread products bid number R I A N S 15-16-005 for the 2015-2016 school year to Galosso's Bakery. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve item two.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, thank you. Next, we go to item K3, approve the extension of bid number R I A N S 13-14-... Next we go to item K3, approve the extension of bid number R I A N S 13-14-001 for the purchase of fresh produce from Sunrise Produce for the 2015-2016 fiscal year. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we ha, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, next we go to item K4, award the nutrition services dairy products bid number R I A N S 15-16-001 to Hollandia Dairy for the 2015-2016 fiscal year. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next we have item K5, to approve the use of Sofos antivirus software, coverage beginning August 16, 2015, and terminating August 15, 2018, through Tebron Company, Inc.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next we go to item K6, approve the renewal of agreement with Apex Learning from July 1st, 2015, to June 30th, 2016.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next we go to K7, approve an agreement with Defiant Learning from July 1st through 2015 to June 30th, 2016.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And please stop me if, uh, anyone would like discussion on these items. Item K8, authorize the district to contract with Suntrax, Suntex International, Inc. for first in math, a one-year subscription from July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2016, to support math fluency for 11,281 elementary and selected middle school students. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, aye. Next we have, uh, item K9, approve the appointment of principals and athletic directors of Carter Eisenhower and Rialto High Schools as, as site-level representatives of the California Interscholastic Federation, CIF League, for the 2015-2016 school year. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next we have item K10, ratify the tentative settlement agreement between the Rialto Unified School District and the Rialto Education Association, REA, from July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2016.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Royal, do we have, thank you, Mr. Martinez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next we go to K11, award bid number 14-15-019 Eisenhower High School pylon, pylon sign project to Bratton Construction. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. O'Kelly. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next we go to K12, approve the recommendations of the administrative hearing panel. Case number 14-15-59. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Royal and Mr. O'Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Any noes?
No.
And that's a no for me. Three ye, yeses and two noes. Do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Montez, you have to go back to closed session.
Okay, so, okay, adjourn after close, that's right. I, I got a little...
We almost made it.
At this time, we'll be going back into closed session. I suggest maybe a five-minute break.
Five-minute break, so we can talk to anybody who wants to talk to us.
Or take a cat nap.